Good evening. My name is Sally Allen, and I'm a member of the League of Women Voters of the Ann Arbor area. I welcome you to our online forum featuring candidates for the Ann Arbor City Council, Ward 1. The candidates will be on the ballot in the primary election on Tuesday, August 4. This year, the League of Women Voters is celebrating 100 years of expanding voter rights, educating voters, and shaping and influencing legislation at local, state, and federal levels. We are pleased to sponsor these forums. The League is a nonpartisan civic organization that encourages informed and active participation by all citizens in government. The League works to increase understanding of major public policy issues and seeks to strengthen and broaden knowledge about our form of government and democracy. While the League does not support candidates or parties, we do take stands on issues we have studied. One of the League's most important goals is to assist voters in making informed choices at the polls, and thus we bring you tonight's program. Our moderator this evening is Peter Allen, who will explain the format and get us started.
Good evening, and I am also a proud member of the League of Women Voters. Thank you very much, Sally. It's my honor to introduce Ann Bannister and Lisa Dish, our two candidates for the first forum. Thank you for participating, candidates. The forum will have this format. Each candidate will have an opening statement for one minute. Each candidate will have a closing statement for 90 seconds. In between, I will ask questions which came from the Ann Arbor community. Each candidate will, at the end of each question that I ask, will have two minutes to respond to this question. At appropriate times, a sign on the screen will indicate the time remaining. First, 30 seconds, and then stop. If you have used up your time, you will be allowed to finish your sentence, and then your microphone will be muted so that the other candidate has equal opportunity to participate. The candidates will begin speaking in alphabetical order. Depending on the number of questions, all candidates will have an opportunity to be the first or last to answer the questions. We're now ready for the opening statement from you, Ms. Bannister. Please.
Hello. My name is Anne Bannister, and I'm asking for your vote on August 4 to reelect me as your Ward 1 city council representative so that I may continue to work with all of you on the issues facing our city. We've built a strong foundation and network over these last two and a half years, but we need to build on the work and investment that we've already made. I'm a people person, a listener, a problem solver, and a champion of plain language and full disclosure in local government. I don't have an ideology or an agenda that I'm trying to bring to council, but I want to work with your priorities. Please visit bannisterforcouncil.com to learn more about me.
And now, Ms. Dish, you have your opening statement, please. You need to unmute, Lisa.
I thought I unmuted, but it didn't happen. So, again, my name's Lisa Dish, and I've lived here in Ward 1 for 12 years. I came here in 2008 with my husband to take -- we both took jobs at the University of Michigan, where I'm very proud to work. We have wonderful students, and I have amazing faculty colleagues. I'm running for office because I share the core values that I think most Ann Arborites have. I believe in ecological and urban stewardship. I think public policy serves us better when it's based on evidence rather than personal impressions. And like many people I've spoken to during this campaign, I appreciate the quality of life in Ann Arbor. I appreciate Ann Arbor, but I recognize that we see the same patterns of racial injustice and economic stratification here as that exists everywhere else in this country, and I'd like to bring creative, committed, and collaborative problem solving to work on those.
Thank you, candidates, and now to the questions. As a reminder, I'll be reading a question once, and it will not be repeated unless requested. To begin, we'll start with Ms. Dish for the first question. The questions we receive from community members fall into several categories. Some have been around for a long time: housing, affordability, gentrification, environment; and some, based on recent events, have definitely now come to the forefront: safety and police reform, racial justice, diversity and inclusion, city budget challenges due to the pandemic. So here's the first question. In which of these areas do you think you have the most passion and are capable of making a difference?
Well, the area that I am most passionate about is affordable housing. And the reason that I'm passionate about it is because I think that it is a place where all of our values -- it's really a foundation for all of our values. So I know that we care about equity and inclusion. Whoops, where are you all? Oh, I've completely -- sorry, I've completely lost the Zoom screen, and there's nothing you all can do about that. Okay, so it's a place where all of our values come together. If we want equity, if we want diversity in the city, we need a diverse housing market as well. I hear many people who live in Ann Arbor tell me that they're on the edge of leaving because it -- and that edge may look like their next rent hike. It might actually look like their first house because they rent and they can't afford to buy, or it might look like their retirement because they've lived here for decades, but they can't afford to downsize. Now, I listen to these stories, but as a political scientist, I also think about how they fit into broader trends. And I learned to ask the question, do we like where those trends are carrying us? And when I look at the trends, the population growth that we're going to see in senior retiree-age folks, and how little we've done to prepare for them, and when I see the struggles that people in their 20s are going through to find affordable housing, I don't like the way these trends are carrying us, and I'd like to make a difference.
Ms. Bannister.
Thank you. Yes, I -- my constituents and I have spent many hours working on those issues facing the city, including affordable housing, and I am very proud of my strong record on affordable housing. One of our -- many of the projects we have voted for are where the developer provides affordable housing contributions. So here in Ward 1, we have the Glen Hotel, where $1.5 million was given through the PUD to the Affordable Housing Fund. We have the Garnet, where over $88,000 was given to the Affordable Housing Fund. And then Broadway Park PUD will have an affordable housing contribution still to be done. I also have served for two and a half years on the Environmental Commission and the Natural Features Subcommittee. So I'm very active in our carbon neutrality, A20 goals, very passionate about that, and also how that relates to our natural features and our trees and our stormwater crisis. And I'm also interested in the -- the third thing is the passionate about the human rights and racial justice. And I helped hire Chief Cox, and I also helped create the Independent Community Police Oversight Commission. So I look forward to strengthening and supporting and standing with Chief Cox and the Police Oversight Commission. And so my main concern is, what do the residents think? How does it impact them, and how can they engage in the decision-making?
Thank you. That leads nicely to the next question, more on housing and affordability. Year after year, council questions have publicly stated that creating low-income housing is of utmost importance, yet they've been unable to meet their adopted goals. What has to change to meaningfully increase the supply of low-income housing in the city? Ms. Bannister, will you please answer first?
Okay, yes, and the question -- residents really care a lot about that affordable housing. So I think that council has made great progress in this area, especially in that we, one, have improved the pre-entitlement for the Y lot. So to finally be moving forward again on that, we'll also be discussing 415 West Washington coming up this Monday night. That one's controversial, so I look forward to the discussion. But as I was just mentioning, we've made great progress in the developer-provided affordable housing contributions, where if the developer wants to build their thing, there's a formula for determining through the PUD how much to contribute to the Affordable Housing Fund. So I voted for several of those developments. I also voted against rezoning the Lower Town project away from the PUD because in that case, we gave away nearly $9 million in affordable housing to the out-of-state developer, and I felt that that was overly permissive, and I voted against that.
Ms. Dish now, please.
So why have we had such a hard time meeting those goals? Developing in Ann Arbor is expensive, and it's expensive because the city puts up more barriers than other cities do. Some of those barriers are checks on power, and I appreciate them, but I think that we can revisit them. For example, in many cities, the council does not repeatedly go back and forth with developers after the planning commission has worked out very thoughtful plans. And in fact, pre-entitlement, which council member Bannister mentioned, is done precisely to get around that, so that you come up with a site plan before the developer is involved. The city does that with community engagement, and then the developer buys, essentially buys that site plan. They agree that they're going to develop to the specifics of that site plan, and in return, they know that the process is going to move more quickly for them. So part of our problem is the process, and I think pre-entitlement is a good way to change that process. Another problem that we have is that many Ann Arborites are concerned about the ways that Ann Arbor is changing, and we are really seeing two kinds of growth that I think different sets of people are concerned about. One is the height that we're seeing downtown, that's one form of growth that we're seeing, and the other is the sort of suburban-style development that we're seeing on the periphery of the city. What we're not seeing is growth of apartment housing sitting on top of retail at more of what we might think of as the periphery of the city, or roads that are well-served by bus routes. And I think that we need to change our zoning code to allow that kind of development. It's called mixed-use development, and I was sorry to see the council majority voting down a proposal to explore that alternative.
Thank you, Ms. Dish. You will be answering the next question first, Ms. Dish, and here's the question. Daily headlines are getting worse regarding COVID-19. Ann Arbor will be experiencing a significant drop in city revenue. What areas within the budget do you think could offer significant savings but that do not seriously compromise important programs and services? Ms. Dish?
It's no question that the current judgment budget for shortfall is going to be a challenge. It looks like we may be facing as much as a $10 million loss, and I hear that people feel very anxious about basic services, so we have to prioritize those. Roads will be repaired, the trash will be picked up, the recycling will find its way into markets. How are we going to do that? City staff has already identified places that we can save money so that we can keep up excellent service. Our highest-paid non-union workers have agreed to take pay cuts. There will be a hiring freeze for most positions. I also support delaying long-term maintenance projects, just like a homeowner might delay replacing the roof as long as it wasn't leaking. Now, despite budget constraints, we don't need to stop working toward our most aspirational goals, and I'm committed to finding creative solutions to bring in more revenue to the city. And in fact, what I just mentioned, the transit-oriented development, mixed-use development along well-served bus routes, is a great way to do that because we can grow our revenue base while working to address those pressing issues like housing shortage and our carbon footprint, reducing our carbon emissions. So now, more than ever, I think it's crucial to see people in council who are committed to collaboration and problem solving and equally committed to opening up communication with a broad spectrum of residents.
Ms. Bannister?
Thank you. Yes, the budget issue is a big one, and in my term on council, I have set through and participated actively in three budget cycles. And I also work closely with Tom Crawford, our interim city administrator, who has over 18 years' experience as our chief financial officer. So I have great confidence in Mr. Crawford, and we've worked on him on the budgets, with him on the budget cycles. I also am a certified financial planner by trade, so I think that brings a lot to the table into sorting needs and wants and prioritizing our budget needs. Couple of the things that we could do, we may have to -- may not be able to afford as many consultants as we used to, but I think we'll be okay because we can rely on our expert residents and local businesses to fill in some of the gaps. We will continue to focus on our essential human services, so things like waiving the penalty fees or reducing them on late property tax payments. We've been housing the homeless people, keeping them safe during the COVID-19 crisis. That hopefully will continue, I will support that. We've been trying to minimize evictions. We're working with the county through our coordinated funding. I've served for two and a half years on the Housing and Human Services Advisory Board, so we work with the county on that. And we, as Lisa mentioned, we will still try to grow the tax base with maybe a pilot program of the transit-oriented development.
Thank you, Ms. Bannister. Next question will lead off again with Ms. Bannister. Most communities are becoming much more aware that racial bias is built into virtually every system in the United States. And while Ann Arbor takes pride in winning many Best City-to-Live-In awards, it ranks poorly in income inequality and is identified as an economically segregated area. Please share your ideas on how a city council can identify and combat systemic racism in our communities. Ms. Bannister?
Thank you for this question. Yes, in Ward 1, we do have a lot of diversity that I have been honored to network with. We have the Islamic Center, we have the African-American Cultural History Museum, we have the Juneteenth Celebration with the NAACP. We celebrated the Bridging 23 Walk from Ypsilanti to Ann Arbor last year. We have a thriving Chinese and Indian populations, and so I try to attend all of their events that they invite me to and be accessible and listen to their concerns and follow through on what their issues are. I also, for racial justice, I also helped create the Independent Community Police Oversight Commission in 2018. We've now come two years down the road. I look forward to working on some amendments to that. I will look to the ICPOC leadership themselves and will follow their lead on what updates might be needed. I also stand with Chief Michael Cox, who I helped hire from Boston, and I look to him too for what we need for racial justice. So through my work with the residents and through the police oversight and the chief of police, I work on racial justice and ending systemic racism wherever we find it. And I also think our efforts towards affordable housing and decreasing gentrification will protect some more of our lower-income and modest-income residents. So I will continue to work hard to protect the people who we already have here from being gentrified out of town.
Thank you. Ms. Dish?
So, yeah, I definitely would frame this question as an issue of structural racism, so it's not just an issue of attitudes. And there's a great deal that city government can do to fight structural racism. We don't get rid of it just by denouncing racial attitudes and providing bias training, although those are important things to do. We need to use policy to open up opportunity and dismantle privilege. I'm shaping my priorities on this issue in response to concerns that I've heard from students and community members about racial harassment that they've experienced at the hands of other Ann Arbor residents, unfortunately, and also harassment and sometimes violence at the hands of the Ann Arbor police. Many Ann Arbor residents are calling for the city to reimagine public safety, and one word that I've heard used to describe this is unbundling. Now, unbundling does not mean doing away with the police department altogether, but it can mean redistributing some of the services that we currently rely on the police to do to other agencies that are better placed to provide them because they specialize in mental health treatment, in addressing homelessness, and in treating substance abuse. So as city council members, we can be open to a conversation of what it might look like to unbundle public safety, and we can be open to moving funding around to support that unbundling. We currently have a veterans court, a drug and alcohol court, and mental health court at the district level. I would like to see those alternatives to criminal justice developed at the circuit court level, too. I support members of the Independent Community Police Oversight Commission's call for council to lobby the legislature for greater transparency and accountability in policing laws, and I support Ann Arbor's adopting a human rights ordinance against biased crime reporting, i.e., racially biased 911 calls.
Thank you, Ms. Dish. Now we'll go to the next question, and Ms. Dish will lead off with her answer. Here's the question. Now that the city council unanimously adopted A20 Carbon Neutrality Plan, what are the most important next steps the city council should take to implement it?
Thank you. So my first priority is to fund staff so that they can seek federal and state grant money to support the most expensive parts of the plan. Those are the parts that involve electrifying city buses and the city fleet, park-and-ride initiatives and that kind of thing. My next priority is to work on the things that we can do right now without having to change state law to lower the cost of providing basic services for everyone in the city. So some of these are already underway, like the 80-acre landfill solar project, that's a cooperative effort with Pittsfield Township. And other work that we're already doing include transitioning our street and traffic lights to municipal ownership and to LED lighting. Other things that we can do right now include ways to address structural inequities around energy. So here in Ann Arbor, the people who can least afford it are often paying the highest utility bills. We can get at that by giving more people access to the Washtenaw County program that helps seniors weatherize their homes. And also, the A20 plan, in addition to expanding access to that program, proposes to create a new program to encourage banks to make loans for energy efficiency to people who may have low credit ratings. Those are two really important areas where equity and sustainability can come together and need to come together. I'd like to see the city partner with the University of Michigan on green rental housing, which would make energy efficiency part of the existing rental licensing process and provide some financial support for that as well, on the condition that landlords wouldn't pass those costs of the upgrades onto their tenants. And I also support the land use aspects of the plan, which I've spoken about before, which is the transit-supported zoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Bannister?
As I've been serving on the Environmental Commission and the Natural Features Subcommittee, we have worked a lot with Dr. Stoltz and staff on this, the A20 plan, and I agree that one of our top priority goals is to get off of the DTE, Dirty Energy Grid, and get to 100% clean and renewable energy. So that is one of the top priorities, and we are working on that and are exploring how best to do that. So I think that'll be the biggest thing. And then falling in under that strategy, two of the A20 plan, is for us to, as we replace our cars, to replace them with electric vehicles, and as we replace our gas appliances to go to electric appliances. And the solarized program seems to be doing really well. I've attended a couple meetings on that and considering solar panels for myself also. We have another meeting coming up on July 11, and so trying to bulk buy our solar panels and heat pumps and such are what we'll be doing. And so we'll also be energy efficiency related to our homes and government buildings, sort of deep retro, deep energy retrofitting of our existing buildings, and then working with AAA TDA and U of M to work on our transportation network.
Thank you, Ms. Bannister, and you will lead off with the answer to the next question. In canvassing your constituents, what seems to be their most important concern? Or concerns?
Yes, Joelle, my residents are vocal on many issues. People are worried about COVID-19. I hear from them a lot that they're worried about when the students come back, whether they'll be safe. So the city and the U of M is working together to make those plans. People are worried about job losses and paying their summer property taxes, and so luckily, council was able, with city staff, to steer away clear to waive some late penalties on the property taxes. They're worried about different times when the city has come through with sort of indiscriminate blanket upzoning. They're concerned about that. We like density, and we like responsible development, but when it comes through as blanket-city-wide ADUs or quadruplexes or transit-oriented development, that's a bridge too far. So we want to collaborate and have a lot of public engagement and participation on our land use. We'd also like to work with AAA TDA to improve our transit system so that a transit-oriented development pilot program could work, but we would like the transportation to come first. And we're concerned about local businesses and shopping local and supporting local and making sure our local businesses can survive into the future. And we're also working on healthy streets, and I'm hearing a lot that some folks don't want their street closed, so we'll talk about that Monday night at the council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Bannister. Ms. Dish?
So I too have heard a lot from Ward 1 voters. I'd say that their most important issue really comes through loud and clear. Ann Arbor is growing, and Ward 1 residents feel that they are bearing the brunt of the growing pains. I've spoken with hundreds of residents, actually, and they speak to me a lot about traffic. They mention racial justice in our schools and in our neighborhoods, and they talk about the rising cost of housing in our ward. Now, these are big problems, but you hear in the way that people communicate them to you that they encounter these problems in their everyday lives on the most basic level in the simplest ways, not being able to make a left turn out of their housing complex at certain times of day. So I'm committed to addressing these problems the way they affect people, which is from the ground up. the ground up. We clearly need to do a better job regulating traffic on residential roads that were never designed to see the commuter volumes that they see now, and we do need to better manage growth going forward. And one way to do that is to manage our commuting better. We need to house some people who currently only work here, we need to get their incomes into our tax base, but we also need to redefine what it means to commute into Ann Arbor. It need not mean commuting to the center of the city. Ann Arbor has currently just 1,300 free park-and-ride slots for over 80,000 commuters who commute in on a weekday in a normal time. I'd like to see more park-and-ride capacity along Plymouth Road and other major bus routes.
Thank you, Ms. Dish. Under the last question, we'll lead off with you, Ms. Dish. The Black Lives Movement has evolved into a police funding issue. Do you believe that Ann Arbor needs to reallocate police funding to more social services, education, and mental health?
Yeah, well, I feel that I've addressed that, but I will definitely say a little bit more about that. I do not think that the Black Lives, what the Black Lives Matter movement is asking for can be well-summed up by a single word, so I don't think reform does it, I don't think defunding does it. I think what people are asking for is policing and more broadly, public safety that is consistent with community values. Currently, Ann Arbor's budget devotes, or Ann Arbor devotes, 25% of its over $100 million budget to policing, to traditional policing. While I am well-aware that the police budget has been reduced over the last 10 years in Ann Arbor since the last recession, I think that parts of that budget could be redistributed to better fund the public service programs like mental health and substance abuse treatment and affordable housing that help us get at the root causes of crime. It doesn't make anyone any safer to jail someone because they're food insecure, because their housing insecure, because they have PTSD, or they have a substance abuse problem. So yes, I am open to having us reimagine public safety in ways that are consistent with our values.
Thank you, Ms. Dish. Ms. Bannister?
Yes, this issue of our spending for our police has been in the forefront since of the murder of George Floyd. So I know that we've been in communication with each other, with residents, with city staff, with Chief Cox, and also with the Police Oversight Commission people, and with our Ann Arbor NAACP and other local people. So we will be continuing to collaborate on how we want to do this. I think that the community policing model is that the police are there when we need them, you know, when we're in trouble and we need to be able to call the police and have them come. So the police themselves, the system, is a needed basic service for us, but we definitely don't want any residents being treated without dignity, or we want everyone treated equally and with dignity. And so that is, we will insist on that, and we will work to remove police officers, identify and remove police officers that are not upholding our standards. But, and yes, we should be spending more on mental health, for sure. That has been, I'm hearing a lot about that, suicides with the young people and the stress. So I do want to work much more on mental health services, and I'm also excited to support Tony Brown in Ward 3 to be an African-American hometown person on city council. I think we need that diversity.
Thank you. Well, you both done a wonderful job of those seven questions. We're already timed for the closing statements. We'll begin with Ms. Bannister.
I want to thank Peter and the League of Women Voters for having us, and congratulations on your 100 years of doing great work for the voters. I'm asking for, to be re-elected on August 4 or before if you're voting absentee, so that I may continue to help you find your political voice and amplify your political voice, follow through and represent my constituents and citizens of Ann Arbor on council. I think I've set a new standard for constituent services. I walk the talk with diversity on my CAMKING committee and diversity in everything that I do, and I'm a people person, a listener, a learner, and a problem solver. Please visit bannisterforcouncil.com to see a growing list of testimonials from people who I've worked with in the neighborhood. And I take very seriously my job as a council member. It's 24/7, and I look forward to serving and representing my constituents in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bannister. Ms. Dish?
One of the things that I'm most concerned to see as I canvass residents is that many people have lost faith in politics, in democracy, really. And they've lost faith because of what's happening in Washington, DC. But they've also lost faith because they see factionalism in our local politics. And I would really, really like to do, if I'm elected, I'd like to do for some people who can still be reached, what I hope to do for my students, which is restore their faith in democracy. And I really mean that when I say that. Disagreement is okay. Ann Arbor's in a period of transition. We don't all see the same future for Ann Arbor. We don't all see the same paths to affordable housing. But factionalism is not okay. Factionalism says, "Your win is my loss." And that's what turns people off of politics. It keeps them from wanting to participate, and it discourages them from believing that politics can ever make a difference or a change. And I can't tell you how many people have told me it's not going to make any difference whether I run or win or lose. I don't believe that, and I would like to be elected, and I would like to bring a collaborative and cooperative style to council. Thank you.
Thanks to both of you. That was very good. I will now turn this over to Sally for her closing comments.
The League thanks the candidates from Ward 1 for participating in tonight's forum and to all of those who contributed questions. All our candidate forms will be available for streaming on your computer and your smartphone. Go to our website, lwvanarbor.org for the link to the programs. You can also view them on CTN. For additional nonpartisan information on candidates and ballot issues, go to vote411.org, which is the League's voter resource guide covering local, state, and federal candidates and current proposals that will appear on your ballot. When you go to the site, you enter your address, and all of the races and the ballot issues that you will be voting on will pop up. They also have descriptions of all of the candidates, fill out forms, and so they have written answers to questions. They're very interesting, and I encourage you to go read those. As a reminder, absentee ballot, absentee voting is available to everyone, and you can register and vote right through election day. So just remember, no matter how you do it, please make sure you vote in the August 4 primary election. Thank you so much.